All right, we're ready. I'll now call the meeting to order.
Good evening. Notice of a special meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, teleconference open meeting pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V, Section 551.041 of the Texas Government Code. The Texas Opens Meetings Act notices hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville will conduct a special meeting on Wednesday, April 1st, 2020, at 5:30 p.m. via Zoom teleconference meeting by logging on at https://zoom.us/j/621840529, meeting ID number 621840529. I would like to take a roll call at this time. Do we have Commissioner Cowan present?
Present.
Commissioner Galansky Pisania? Commissioner Galansky Pisania, present? Commissioner Joel Mungia?
Sorry, Griselda, I'm here. I had muted myself, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
President.
Commissioner Gowan?
Present.
Commissioner Tetra? Commissioner Tetra? Commissioner Neez?
I'm here.
Mayor, you're present?
Yes.
Commissioner Tetra?
She's right, we can see her.
We can see her, okay.
She's muted.
Okay.
Is somebody controlling the mutes?
No, individually you are.
Okay.
Okay, we do have a forum present. So, the next item on the agenda is a public comment. I did have one person sign up for public comment. For the record, his name is Jesus Salinas. He does not wish to address the commission, so we'll go ahead and move on to the next agenda item, which is-
Just FYI, I'm unmuted and I am present.
Ma'am. Okay, the agenda item is discussion regarding the City of Brownsville response to the urgent public necessity concerning COVID-19, otherwise known as coronavirus, including but not limited to a continuity plan update, city staffing, facilities and services, including actions and continuity of such operations, letter B, financial update, emergency procurement, and letter C, drive-through collections, testing site update. May we have the first department to report?
Good evening, Mayor and City Commission. On item A, how we structured this, you should have in your packets roughly around twenty twenty summaries, for the most part, we have roughly eighteen departments, including the City Attorney's Office. And what we are going to do is have each director provide you their update at a very high level, similar to how we do this on an almost daily basis. You all can ask any questions you may have during the update, and then we'll proceed with items B and C. So, James, can you please do the roll call?
Yes, sir. First up, we have Sean with the airport, please. Sean, if you can hear me, in the lower left corner, if you hover your mouse, you'll have a mute and unmute button. If you're on the line, please move your mouse to the lower left corner and unmute.
If he can't, I can go ahead and provide that.
Yes, Bryant, if you would, please.
Okay, so currently, the airport has implemented its continuity plan. Part of the continuity plan was to remote work some workers with the reduction in the public's access to the terminal by only ticketed passengers. That hasn't been necessary yet. It's also been more of a priority to have other departments get the equipment they needed for that remote working. So, we've kept staff at the airport and the secure offices. In addition to that, we have stepped up the custodial services and DPS has actually started doing some screening of anyone from about, I think about six different cities, including the tri-state area of New York, New Jersey, and from New Orleans and some other cities. So, all of those people will be and be screened when they arrive into Brownsville, and they'll be into taking to quarantine for two weeks or until they leave the state. So, with that, we've just done a limited access to the terminal. We've done increased custodial, and currently the staff that we have is mainly working, or maintenance staff is mainly working on the airfield, and administrative staff are just working in the office. There's less than ten, so that's how it's being handled right now. That's the only update we have for the airport. Any questions?
Thank you, Brent. And commissioners for the airport, there will be a central forecast for you to review as part of item B.
Next up, we have City Attorney's Office.
Hello, good afternoon. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
As part of the City Attorney's Plan to make sure that we have a continuity plan implemented to address the concerns with this situation and for any that may come, we were able to create a platform for the City Attorney's Office to be able to work remotely to minimize the face-to-face contact, and we're able to set up a method under which all city departments can submit all their legal work to us, and we can address those, work to those, and get them back to those departments, so that so that work comes in and out on time as it would normally occur. Bottom line, for the City Attorney's Office, our big thing is we want to make sure that we are able to work in a manner that is seamless, in this application of the work that we do with other departments, so that our work doesn't go down. There's always the one next person up that can ensure that legal services continue with the city. Right now, most of the office is telecommuting. We do have some administrative staff that has chosen to go back. They feel much better with the equipment we have at the office, and we've implemented some strict rules under which they can, the two person up are there, you work at the office. There's no face-to-face contact with anyone, door is closed, everything is still done electronically. They do have all the equipment they need to complete their work. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is City Secretary's Office. What do you mean, Griselda? City Secretary's Office. Just to let you all know that the Office of the City Secretary does consist of five employees performing an array of critical functions. Just to advise you, at the moment, we have implemented our strategy of our continuity plan. At this time, we are working with two departments, which is Municipal Department and the Library Department. We have staff from their department assisting us with being able to scan all our municipal records. As you all know, right now, we continue to see, our vital records are very important, so to see a couple of customers that need to come by the office and get their certificates. We are limiting, City Plaza is for the most part, but we do have someone at the front entrance allowing customers to still come in. They're being limited as they come in, so that we are practicing, they're staying six feet apart. So far, we are working, again, from the office, to continue to serve our citizens. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Griselda.
Next, we have Communications and Marketing Department.
Good afternoon, Commission and Mayor. Our continuity plan consists of deactivating our telework. The staff, employees that are working from home but are on call for immediate response to any emergency communications involved in COVID-19. We also have myself and your manager who are rotating shifts for our secondary facility located at 650 Torres Boulevard, aka the permit. We have a daily download that we do with staff. We stay on task, we relay key messaging, and all staff are on call during weeknights and weekends on a three-step operation. Staff are required to report to David Passlaw to assess any catwalks. And we're continuing, moving forward, being innovative in how we communicate with our general public with creative projects like the "Carnate with the City", continuing to do live streams, Q&amp;A sessions with the community, and we're following up. We're accomplished today, continuing to do branded topics, increase recognition on putting out in terms of our message, messaging, and answering questions we receive through phone, email, and social media. That's all we have.
All right, thanks, Felipe. Somebody's, somebody's computer's making a lot of noise. It's really distracting. I don't know who it is.
I think we should all mute until-
Yeah, yeah, let's mute ourselves until we're good.
Next department we have is Engineering and Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is Armando Gutierrez. I just want to report that Engineering Public Works, all services are continuing. The only change that we really have made is in the public contact. Engineering has close to offices, and anybody that comes to Engineering Building for help, we're helping them at the door. However, we have encouraged all developers and builders and the public alike to submit their requests by email, you know, to PDF of plans and et cetera, and that has really cut down the number of walkings that we have in. You know, while we were averaging between thirty and forty people per day, we're now getting maybe one or two and no more than five. So, that has helped a lot. At the landfill, we also have encouraged everybody to stay in the vehicles, not to get down and come into the office, and all the transactions are being done at the window, and it, everything's working smoothly. At the main office, we hardly get anybody come in. Other than that, you know, we have encouraged and we do encourage our, all the employees to practice good hygiene, to wash their hands and avoid touching their face. Everything's working smoothly. As a matter of fact, the all-street work, like paving, patching, striping, is moving very smoothly because of the light traffic. So, you know, I think we're going to stay on schedule and maybe even get ahead of schedule on that part. If there's any questions, I can answer questions now.
I want to, this is Rose Gowan. I want to give a shout out to your staff, Armando. I've been riding to work along the Battlefield Trail at least three times a week, and I've never encountered the public work staff so friendly and inviting to the people that are, that are all around them, even the people that were waiting in line on the trail to get into HEB. They were friendly and helpful and waved and said good morning, and so a big shout out to your crew.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, and I'm sure they do appreciate it. I will let them know.
Thank you.
And I noticed that they were working in the Southmost Trail this morning around 10:30, and I've also noticed patchwork on streets in my district, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Finance Department.
EA, we, we got, oh, Sean, sorry, Sean. Um, this is the CVA. We got the resources needed for the employees to telecommute. One of our focuses is continuation of payroll. One of the concerns is if we're teleworking, making sure that we're able to process payroll, it's very important. We have three individuals that is, that are able to process payroll remotely if needed. Procurement services have provided direct assistance to current COVID-19-related activities, so we could expedite the procurement of those items on a timely basis. Accounts payable, we're currently working on a system to approve vendor payments electronically within our ERP system. Want to make sure that we continue making timely payments to vendors so accounts can stay open. One of the other major items is going to be working with the departments to kind of start looking at the impact, revenue impacts to the departments. Sales taxing revenues, bridge revenues and items of that sort, that's where we're going to be working with the departments. Also, reallocation of resources, what can we do to reallocate current resources so that we can minimize the budget impact on the city's budget? And these are ongoing efforts right now. Any questions?
Hey, Lupe, this is John. But when do you think you'll have a good handle on the, on the impact to the city's budget?
I'm hoping about a week, hopefully about a week, if not sooner, we'll get something a little bit. We're progressively working on it right now, and foresee should take us about a week if not less.
Okay.
So, we can have that ready for next, next meeting now, Lupe, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next?
Next is Enterprise Applications. Gail, please.
Okay, so for Enterprise Applications, we are the Information Technology Support Staff. And one of the things we're trying to do is keep everything up and running, and we're trying to support all of the departments and everything they want to do. And implementation of telework is our primary responsibility right now. We have been cross-training our staff to cover each other in the event that they're unable to work. And we're also supporting all of the requests that we're getting for VPNs, for technology, for cameras, everything imaginable under the sun they're doing right now, and we make it happen for them. Right now, in our department, we have a 50% completion in telework plan. We have seven employees successfully working remotely. Everyone is equipped to work remotely. Our goal is really to have one or two people in the office at different shifts to support service calls, and then evaluate for possible rotation as the COVID-19 situation escalates. And if things get really bad, we will be pulling upon different departments to help support us, such as Fire EMS IT and Brownsville PD IT. And we also have, currently have a contract with our network support vendor who can provide also extra engineering for us. Some of the challenges we've been experiencing, of course, is the cellular service provider and the limitations of the connection and the speed, and the demands that all the departments are making on us. And currently, we're just making adjustments as we need be. As the situation changes, we change too. And that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Thanks, Gail.
Next, we have Brownsville Fire Department.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. As far as Brownsville Fire Department working in operations is normal right now, with some adjustments, as we're utilizing a paramedic and dispatch to screen our calls and guide some of the 911 callers that may appear with fluid-like symptoms or do have questions that are calling 911 that may not need a hospital. We're doing this to try to alleviate some of the overburden on hospitals so that they can care for the more critical patients. We created plans to reduce exposures to personnel and the community in our responses, and we're continuing to train regularly on that. And we're, right now, we're working with the Texas Commission on Fire Protection, Texas Department of State Health Services, and several other organizations to formulate plans for future responses and for the latest updates. Our protocols are changing pretty, pretty quickly here on the way we're handling it, and we we're designating here in the near future one ambulance to transport patients to reduce exposures to our personnel. As far as operations, our fire inspections, our EMS building continue as normal. There are some adjustments with the office hours as far as- as normal. There are some adjustments with the office hours as far as, you know, our office being open, but we, there are signs, there are contact, our inspectors are far more so by phone. And we're still conducting inspections, investigations as, as normal. Any other questions?
Chief, uh, this is, uh, this is Mayor Mendez. As far as your personnel right now, have you increased personnel at any of the stations in, in regards to emergency response and, and paramedics? Or is that still pretty much where it was a couple of weeks ago?
We're still operating at our normal capacity. Uh, some of the plans we are looking at, and the Texas Commission of Fire Protection just came out with a rule today saying that if, if need be, we can bring back retired or expired personnel or personnel that are almost done with training. That can be worked on the drugs. As far as the medical side of it, that still hasn't been passed at the state level. They're pending that, that they may be able to work under the medical director's license and not be certified for a period of nine days. But we're still waiting on, on that ruling from the state, which hasn't been passed. We haven't increased personnel or anything. We're still operating at normal levels right now.
Chief, I have a question. Um, do we have a budgeted amount of money set aside? Or do we have access to testing kits for our EMTs that are picking up people who are possibly COVID positive or have members of their households that are COVID positive when they have to go in and pick somebody up for the ambulance service? Are we offering our, our firefighters the option of, you know, being tested daily before they go home or once a week or anything like that? And the same goes for PD. Are we offering that to our employees that have to make contact with public?
We are, we're screening our employees when they come in and when they leave, uh, doing regular temperatures and, and questions. Uh, as far as official testing, we're, we are testing those that are, need to be tested, that are, that are exposed to COVID patients or confirmed COVID patients, or if they've become symptomatic. Uh, yes, the first responders that are higher risk. But at the same time, you know, there's limited testing still out there. So there's a lot of guidelines that we're still following. And we're really trying to just follow best practices right now. And we're contacting several EMS services around the country to ensure that we're, we're keeping our guys and our women safe out there.
Okay, thank you.
So Chief, this is Dr. Galloway. I've, I read a very interesting study lately that came, that was in the New York Times, came out in the New York Times. It was about a, a special thermometer called a Kinsa thermometer. And it's basically connected to an app so that when you take your temperature, it logs into the cloud. And so it, it was very useful in New York City, for instance, when they gathered all that data to show how there was a group increase in temperature throughout the New York area right before the COVID spiked. And they found it to be true in, in Florida and other areas as well. So it's, it's, it's basically a thermometer. But since it uploads, it can analyze data like that. And I'm, when you said that you're testing your employees, it might be worth it to look at getting Kinsa thermometers. And, and that way you can kind of overall screen the group of first responders and tell if there are changes that are happening before they actually strike. It's called Kinsa, K-I-N-S-A.
Thank you. I'll definitely look into that. And we are looking at new thermometers and bringing in more equipment and everything. As you know, a lot of the equipment's on back order nationwide. And so, uh, we're, we're in the same boat as everybody. We do have a good supply of personal protective equipment right now. Uh, but we are looking at more technological, uh, ways to respond and, and kind of being innovative on those responses. But that's something definitely we'll look into.
Thank you, Chief.
Next, we have Internal Services Department.
Good evening. This is Roxanne, I'm one of the internal services director. Currently, our division of five four six health call center is operation, operating as normal out of the city library, practicing social distancing, filtering citizen requests and answering COVID nineteen questions. Our continuity plan for the call centers to telework, hopefully by April sixth, um, so that staff can remain home. They are, they will be given all-in-one computers with Wi-Fi connection and they'll be able to answer calls as if they were in the call center. If, you know, filtering out the citizen complaints or transferring calls or answering questions about anything having to do with COVID nineteen. Should the need arise with the calls increase? Because it seems to increase every time the situation escalates, we may need to solicit more additional staff from other departments to assist in, in taking calls. We've identified some from other departments that have first-hand knowledge of GOQ, which is our customer relations system, who may be cross-trained to answer and assist citizens. As far as the fleet maintenance division, they're currently operating as normal. And they're planning to continue as so. Um, it could be that if they need to, we can always pull in the fleet liaisons from the different departments to assist and cross-trading them to be proficient in fleet management. For now, we're, we're planning on, they'll be, they will not be teleworking until. As far as the building facility maintenance divisions, um, the facility side has increased their disinfecting efforts in all areas, uh, specific also to the public areas where, um, the public's entering. We've secured doors to where there's only one entrance. We have people at the doors that are disinfecting as they come in and walk, come in and leave. There, as far as our building staff, they'll also be continuing to work on preventive maintenance efforts and other projects, you know, that are pending to get done. Should these people need to be replaced, you know, for whatever reason, uh, we will be soliciting from other departments who have probably skilled, uh, staff that could probably be plumbers or, you know, other electricians or carpenters, janitorial services, and who can be cross-trained in what we do for facilities and building maintenance. I, that's pretty much what's going on in our department. Any questions?
Thank you.
Next, we have the library department.
Good evening. This is Jerry Hitchcock. Uh, for the library, as part of our continuity plan, we have implemented several projects and strategies. One is a collection inventory. We're using this time to take a full inventory of libraries' collection. And we've already completed the adult fiction collection at the main library. And we're moving on. We're a week ahead of schedule from what we were scheduling out in terms of collection types. And we plan to have this by July three first. We're also doing a virtual library project, and we've acquired a cloud-based software platform that'll allow us to provide virtual reference solutions to our, our patrons. This will allow our residents to submit questions and interact with reference staff online, whether they're here at the library or if they're teleworking, and allows us to have full tracking of all the requests and be able to assist them and guide them to online resources and things that they need to help them, especially with all the students, uh, doing work from home. We've also created a new way for our patrons to access all the library's online collections by creating a new virtual library card process that allows patrons to get a virtual library card and be able to access all of our online resources, including eBooks and magazines and other things. We today just started our videotaping of our first five Storytime programs. We're going to be creating virtual programs that are going to be for Storytime for children's arts and craft projects that people can do from home, informational videos on how to access online services, things of that nature. And we will begin publishing those materials early next week. For our cross-department support, the library has provided eleven staff members so far to assist other departments with critical needs. And this represents a little more than seventeen percent of the library's workforce. We, we have assigned four, uh, staff to assist at the sports park testing site, four to the city secretary's office, and we provided three to help internal services with facility maintenance. And teleworking, we are currently working with enterprise applications to begin the deployment of teleworking capabilities. First of this will allow our required staff in our plan, the capability to, to work from home on payroll and other administrative functions. And we are currently reviewing the feasibility of having material cataloging and other technical library type services to be done remotely. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Next, we have Municipal Court Department.
Mike, I think you're muted. There you go.
Mike, we can hear you. Go ahead, sir.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay. Uh, I was clicking a lot of buttons. I apologize. Good evening, Mayor and, and Commissioners. Municipal Court continues to have daily operations from eight to five. We have, we're closing our lunch hours from twelve to one. Uh, the implementation of our operations continuity plan include identifying three employees only out of, out of twenty-eight. As you know, we have the, we have a record that are very sensitive confidential, so we can't take our work home. However, a couple of things have happened also with the continuity plan. What we've done also is identified qualified clerical staff to help other departments, such as four going to city secretaries. Uh, we had two yesterday that helped out in the, uh, two of our staff helped out yesterday at the testing site over at the sports park. And also, one of the big things we have going for us is the record retention schedules at the Levi's warehouse. There is a lot of work there to be done and occupied. It occupies us tremendously. We have seven staff starting April sixth. That'll go one week, then the following week, seven more staff. Uh, and so we have, we have a lot of work, believe it or not. A steady she goes as, as public still comes in. Example, today, we had total of seventy, ninety-six people visitors. Seventy-six were on hand here at the lobby and twenty were utilized through the drive-through. However, we continue to, uh, practice personal hygiene, our, our, our tellers and of course, uh, the, the people that we have in collections, they're using gloves as well. And we maintain very tight on some of the cleanings that's going on here. We've got two person now that have been hired and they come here and they constantly clean our areas. And so it'll, it'll, it'll have a steady fluctuation of people coming in. Unfortunately, we still have people that come in and look for Cameron County. A lot of these people come in and they, they realize they're in the wrong place. Um, also, we, um, we also have a, let's see what else. Um, other than that, we, we continue to monitor everything that happens, both outside and inside. We continue to also have a good success in people logging in and doing their payments online and the wedding header number as well. And so, uh, we, we do, we, we have a lot of, of work, believe it or not, but, uh, we certainly take all of our personal hygiene very serious. And, uh, so, so far, so go, steady she goes at Municipal Court. Any questions?
So Mike, uh, this is Mayor Mendez. I, I heard you say that there was seventy-six people that came into the lobby today. Is that correct?
Unfortunately, yes, they came in. They, it's one, one by one, uh, Mayor. And so we, it's one, one, we had a family show up of six, four kids and, and the mom and the dad. And, uh, we, we have security that helps us out. So they told them they can't come in, only the, only the person that is taking care of business. Other than that, uh, that's how we intercept and stop the traffic flow here.
Okay, yeah, that was my question. How many people you were letting in at one time? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I hope the security advised the parents that the children should not be out in the public right now.
Yes, absolutely. That happened today as well.
Okay, good.
Next, we have multimodal transportation.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. Um, the Brownsville Multimodal Transportation Department provides an essential service that must continue during an emergency or threat event to, to meet the public's transportation needs. Uh, due to the various responses to COVID, Brownsville Metro ridership has decreased approximately seventy-five percent beginning in March eighteen, twenty, March eighteen of this month. The, um, the average ridership has a peak, has declined from four hundred and seventy-one riders to eighty-two, uh, eighty-two point eight riders. In order to carry out the essential services and mitigate the, the effects of the decreasing ridership, uh, we will be implementing phase one of our continuing, continuity measures to be, to continue to provide the service. Fixed route service will be reduced by a hundred and sixty-five point ninety-six hours, but maintaining eighty-five percent level, uh, service. Paratransit service will be restricted to only essential purpose trips, work, medical groceries. And we continue to restrict only two passengers on, on the paratransit service. We, we're restricting ten passengers on the fixed route service. The private bus operators have also incurred lost in ridership, therefore reducing their hours of operations. That will impact the La Plaza Terminal operating hours. We'll be reducing the La Plaza Terminal hours by twenty-one hours weekly. And the Jose Colunga Yard will be reduced by twelve hours per week. Due to the service reductions, both operational maintenance overtime will be eliminated. Operational staff that is impacted by reduction of hours in phase one will be cross-trained in customer service reservations, dispatching and scheduling position, scheduling procedures. They will also assist with route realignment assessments and schedule preparations for implementation as adjustments are needed based on the COVID nineteen situation. Maintenance staff that are impacted by the reduction of hours in phase one will be catching up and advancing work that has fallen behind due to COVID nineteen. The, the additional disinfecting protocol in place now also require more labor at the end of the day when the buses return to the yard for fueling and cleaning. Administrative staff will be cross-trained for all back office procedures such as payroll, fuel reports, agenda preparation, taxi renewals, uh, logos, parking contracts, involved procedures and other duties. A soft freeze has been implemented for vacant transit operator positions. I'm happy to report that our new mobility director, Mr. Hoagasa, uh, effectively started today. Uh, and he will be leading the RGV MPO relationship and mobility management operations while supporting the metro transit, uh, department. It is also important to note that the city of Brownsville, Brownsville Metro will be eligible for the federal emergency legislative, uh, relief legislation, uh, under the CARE Act. Funding of twenty-five billion is being made available to transit fifty-three oh seven recipients and other COVID nineteen related issues. Of those twenty-five billion, it is estimated that fifty-three oh seven, uh, recipients, which includes Brownsville Metro and the city of Brownsville, will receive three times their twenty-twenty appropriation dollar amounts. These funds will be available for the operating expenses of transit agencies related to the COVID nineteen responses. Staff continues to monitor and track related expenses and revenue losses and project impacts to the transit department's budget. This concludes my report. Any questions?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to congratulate Hoag for coming on board. Congrats, Hoag.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good forward to, to working with you, man. Thanks.
If I may ask a question, Norma? Hi, um, this is Nerith Kalansky. Um, are any riders being turned away because of limited capacity? Um, are any riders being turned away because of limited capacity?
No, we, we have flex box and the flex box pick up the, the additional buses that we have on standby. To pick up any additional riders that can get on a bus. So at, at this point, no, we're not getting any kind of time. They might be eight, but they will be limited.
Okay. And so if you already have ten, can they pick up another one? Or how does it work?
We, we utilize one of our flex road buses. We have a bus set aside for that bus to school that bus is called and comes in and picks up the, the, the remaining passengers that were left behind. Were able to get on, on a particular bus.
Great, thank you.
And just to mention also, Mayor Commission, Mr. Hoel Garcia, the Director of Mobility. Is also pretty much replacing some of these, most of the duties of the Assistant General Manager, Assistant Director of B Metro Transit. Because he, he has that transit experience. So that's, I think a plus. Not only will he be able to lead the RGV MPO mobility piece, which is very important, particularly if we're maybe looking at additional funding. Through the stimulus package, but also to help, help support and, and lead, support. Norma, the Director of B Metro and Transit in general. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. This is Perla Cepeda, OB and HR Director. In OB and HR, we continue operating with employees working on site in orders through telework. With weekly rotation, we are innovating our services to our employees and the community to respond fast. We're using a new digital platform for hiring and pre-employment process. We continue working with the telecommittee emergency agreement updated with, with directors. And also with a SIG and pool, SIG pool and bank policy with care committee. And also we are using all of city's best practices in order to provide to the directors guidance and, and some. Some response that maybe employees have. We are monitoring the Families First Coronavirus Respond Act that start today, April first to December thirty-first. And I can say that we also use in this unfortunate circumstances with a proactive direction to continue with some of initiatives like the Wellness Program. Soft launch and professional development in collaboration with UTRGV. And any question? Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, I'm next. So this is Damaris. I'm the, good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Commission and tuned in public. My name is Damaris Mablon, the Parks and Recreation Director. Many of the departments of the city were in the first phase of teleworking deployment. So that is a major focus for our department this week is to prepare for telework. To ensure staff that has the resources and materials in order to do work from home should it occur. Another major focus has been assessing our positions within a TARP department, assigning essential safety work. Such as disinfecting every toy, wall stall, playground structure, anything where the public is in, in contact with. We're currently at an estimated of eighty percent completion. Most importantly, because of Gonzalez Park, we will schedule at the rest of this weekend, next week. It's been closed to the public. So there's limited access there, but the water, we had a water issue last week, so we weren't able to be into the building. Also meeting with staff to address concerns and how our new normal is, and we've met about with ninety-five percent. And following up with any employees that were not able to attend our meetings. And I was in individually and in small group departments meeting with them. We're employing several strategies and working with community partners and nationally to share virtual parks and recreation content. Our trails have been reopened. Parks do remain closed. And playground amenities, we are intervening when we see public there and just asking them to understand and that we're asking people to comply with the declarations. The Old City Cemetery is scheduled by appointment only. And then we've been shifting a lot of our support, especially to support the emergency drive-through testing site and emergency operations for the testing site. I have to say, our sports park staff has been incredible and dedicated and worked all weekend long just to make sure that the site was safe and secure. And including a blood drive at the event center. And then putting into plans that we haven't been able to do such as for a long time due to various reasons, such as like our drainage improvements at the golf course. So now is the perfect time to do that. Always looking for the silver lining. Additionally, we're tracking loss of revenues and we're trying to reschedule events rather than cancel them. We're still in process of tracking, but a small snapshot is at the Brownsville Event Center where we've issued about ten thousand dollars in refunds. Twenty-five events were canceled and about a thirty-eight thousand dollar revenue loss during this period. And we had thirteen reschedules and that was for the period of March twentieth to April eighth. We're also limiting expenditures such as overtime unless it's COVID nineteen related, rotating staff time off. We've had about a thousand and fifty-nine hours to help comply with the shelter in place and people take time off. Some people were initially a little bit scared and so they were wanting to distance themselves. But we have many that are still returning to work. Twenty-seven staff used sick leave and a thirty-four used annual leave. And then we're also just reducing hours as the workload decreases. So like our part-time employees, currently our concession staff at sports park are, have zero hours, they're temp seasonals. Our part-timers after sanitizing, sanitizing will reduce down probably even to ten to twenty and further if needed. We are optimistic and we still continue to plan for summer and do the work for that so that should we be able to celebrate the Ring of Summer, we'll have summer camps ready to go. And then we did send some updates on survey results for what nationally. And I'll just highlight a couple at the top is that, and this was as of Friday, the twenty-seventh. That seventy-five percent of the nation's parks are staying open and ninety-two percent of trails are staying open. Ours are closed. Community gardens were sixty-eight percent. Open and dog parks fifty-eight percent. Both, both of ours are closed on that. And then we're ninety-six percent indoor facilities have closed. Seventy-one percent of playgrounds are closed and permanent restrooms located are sixty-eight percent. And then we're locking gates, putting, posting signage, using caution tape just to help send the messaging. And we're working on other ways to support positive messaging for exercise, alternative, social media. So we want to do also some signage for that. So we're working on that to help support our virtual, virtual recreation and parks. End of report.
So Dan Rice, this is, well, you can see me. This is Rose. I was on a video conference with the RGV MPO Bike Peds Committee today. And I asked Hidalgo County folks if they have seen an increase in trail usage. Because their trails are open as well during this time as we have. And they said, yes, their trail, their trails are exploding, which is really very much in keeping with the nation. Trail usage has gone wild because people can social distance on them. There are even efforts in many cities to do pop-up trails. And what, I wondered what was that? And what that means is some cities are taking, since there are not many cars on certain roads during the time of shelter. They're taking particular roads, maybe in a neighborhood that doesn't have a trail or doesn't have access to a trail. And closing the street, making it a pedestrian corridor for a prescribed amount of time during the day or on the weekend or something like that. And so they're calling them pop-up trails, which I thought was interesting, especially I, I wanted to look at that. If there was a neighborhood that we thought was really, really underserved and didn't have access to trail, we might be able to do that during this time.
Yeah, definitely. I think that's a great way and looking, always looking to what our cohorts are doing nationally. And then looking at other resources, the parks that have trails and walkways in them, especially if they're in underserved areas or high. Obesity rated, I mean, the whole city is of course, but in general, but maybe those that have walking trails. We can discuss if we can allow those to be used in, in the parks like at Cabler Park. And even Portway has a small one, the golf course potentially, even if it's just we open that trail for walking as many walking. So I think we can look into that and we'll reach out to city management.
The last thing I wanted to mention was I've been riding to work three times a week since, and on the battlefield trail. And since they're burying that cable, they've been grading the, as I go north, they've been grading the dirt on the right side of the trail. And it's been impressive to see the number of people out with their dogs on the graded dirt. But also folks that are running are, are seemingly choosing to run on the dirt as opposed to the, the concrete. So another silver lining may be that it's very cheap, I think, just to grade that dirt once in a while. But it's creating a space for use that, that we didn't think of.
And that's good to hear because we've been wanting to widen that trail and part of it be asphalt for the cyclists. And then the, the dirt side for runners and other walkers easier on the knees. So that, that's really good to hear. So we can look at, let's continue that as we go on to keep that. And it'll widen the path because shared use of that has also been a little bit contentious and working on the etiquette signs.
Damaris, good afternoon. This is Nerith Golansky. I have just a few questions about the rules. Because I've been using the Southmost Trail the past few days just to, to get out. I live though about a mile away from the trail. So is it okay to walk there? I've also noticed people driving there. So what are, like, what, what would be the rules about that?
The rules, we've just been asking people to, to comply with whatever the decrees have said. So I believe access on the streets are permissible, whether you're driving to the trail. It's just practice the social distancing while you're on the trails. And keep under gatherings, you know, under ten. We, we want to make sure that we, and we, we don't recommend the use of bring your own water. Because we, we will go and sanitize any drinking fountains or things like that. It's not on a continuous basis. So yes, I believe, but walking to the trails or driving to the trails is permissible.
Thank you. And then I've just noticed some people though that, that.
That they go walking like with their friends and stuff. So there's not the separation that one might desire. But what, I, I don't feel, or do you think that we should be policing others or no? Just kind of mind your own business and stay the proper distance away. Well, as staff, when we see it, we just, I got myself, I, I've seen people, especially like on the fitness courts. And I'm saying, please, I know you want to work out and I just, please understand, even on the weekends. You know, I had to do that and I felt terrible and a poor child was crying because I had to get them off the swings and I, they don't understand and it's, it's heartbreaking. And so I just have to tell them like, I understand that, but for right now, it's for everyone's safety. So I'm doing that as a city employee. I would recommend if, if anyone from the public, you never know how people will react. So if they wanted just to, maybe we can reach out with chief and communications from PD to say, what's the best way if, to, to report that? Just because you never want to put any, any in a confrontation type scenario.
And I would just add to that, that I've received multiple complaints and photos of people still hosting workout classes. I mean, the pictures I saw, there were at least twenty people there working out together so close to each other. And my advice to them was just to call PD next time they saw it.
Yeah, that's what I've been saying.
Yeah, it, it should not happening.
I agree, but then also keep in mind, and I don't mean the twenty-person class, that's wrong. But keep in mind that if you're walking or, or riding or with a, someone you live with. Then, you know, the social distancing, if it's, if it's a person from your household that you're used to being, living with and being close to, then they don't need to separate.
Very valid point, yes. And, and, and that's where it's hard to distinguish is who do you live with and who don't, who you don't. And you don't want to confront anybody about that. But we do ask the public in general, please comply. Please don't do your group sessions. Try to do it virtually as best you can, even if you, we understand small businesses, especially like gyms. Are, are being impacted by this, but let's be creative and innovative and how we can do this online or what else. But reach out to us and we'll see what we can do to help support that.
If I can add a couple of things. The, the governor's order from yesterday does mention specifically parks as essential services. The, with the way the order reads here, it says, "Executive Order does not prohibit people from accessing essential services or engaging in essential daily activities." Such as, and then there's a list. One of them is visiting parks. So what I'd like to do is have our administration and legal counsel look at that to make sure that we're okay. As we're operating right now, I know that the hike and bike trails were, have been open. I know the parks have been closed. However, the governor's order may, may change that. So can y'all please look at that and see how the governor's order may, may affect us on this? I'm not sure if he's talking about state parks or local parks. And then second, Chief, if you would, Chief Salceda, if you would, just kind of give us a, a real quick summary of how your, your personnel are policing the trails and parks.
Absolutely, sir. So I can, I can do my presentation at this point. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. You know, we are, we continue to serve our community in a very unsteady, unknown time in a, in our community and throughout the nation and our world. But we remain a hundred and fifty percent operational. None of our services have or will be suspended. We have made several changes in protocol and how it is that our community goes about requesting special services from us. But we have gone through great extents to be able to continue to provide those operations to our community. In regards to some of the things that we are currently working on under our contingency plan. We've identified eighteen mission critical employees that are teleworking. We've gone ahead and further cross-trained those positions three deep to be able to ensure that those operations are critical. Since they are critical, are carried out throughout the face of COVID nineteen. We've also leaned heavy on technology. We launched our app that we did in, in the effort to be able to maintain an information, information flow to our community. Keep them abreast of the latest and all the different things that we're doing. We post our operation in regards to how it is that we go about enforcement, the different orders and everything else, our curfews and everything else. We also lean on one of our vendors for, to be able to launch an axum evidence module. It allows us to be able to safeguard our officers and our community members against safe distancing, safe distancing violations. We're able to communicate with our prospective victims, suspects or otherwise through a link that our officers are able to launch at the address. Once they actually respond to that address. As far as the orders go, we continue enforcement operationally of those orders. Our first prong, we take it from a very prong approach. So our first prong is to continue to educate our community on what, on what it is that the orders are calling for. And to educate them on what it is that is expected and the why, right? How it is that, you know, them not abiding by the orders, they actually become health hazards. And so we want to make sure that we emphasize the fact that it's very necessary that they comply with the orders. In regards to the questions and to the parks and the trails and how it is that we get there and we don't. That is an essential activity that the county order calls for. So however it is that they get to that trail is permissible as long as they, if they're pulled over by an officer. They let them know that they are on their way to the trail system. We will look further into the government. Uh we will look further into the governor's order, uh mayor. What we usually do, it takes us at least a good day so that we're able to not only read through the order, but we also seek uh, you know, clarification on very. Varied issues. Right now, we will continue to operate under our proclamation and our county order. Um this point, I'll open it up to any questions. I'm sure there's several.
Thanks, chief.
And I would just also encourage the police department to um utilize our testing sites. Um for any officers that might feel like they've come into contact. We've seen what happened in, in New York and I have personally heard about the changes that you've implemented to protect the officers and the staff and especially the. The dispatchers, and I really, really want to commend you for that because it is such an important thing to have. Um our officers protected, but most importantly, the public protected um to be able to have them when they need them. And so I just want to make sure that if there's any officers that have come into contact with anything that. They know uh the city has these reso- resources available.
Absolutely. As part of our continuity plan, we have uh established a COVID nineteen impact team. We do have that team uh specially trained and we do have them with PPEs. Uh one of the challenges that we had, an internal challenge was to be able to divide our communication division. We were able to successfully do that. So we have satellite uh offices for them. So basically, the way our city is divided is divided into quadrants, so we were able to successfully. Divide the dispatchers that oversee those quarters so that we're able to dispatch uh from those uh rural uh, those satellite offices.
Any other questions?
It looks like it. Thanks, thanks, chief.
For the record, that was the police department's report. Next, we have a planning and redevelopment department.
Good evening, uh mayor and members of the commission. Uh the planning department is operating under the first phase of our continuity plan. Uh two thirds of our staff uh presently are working in the office and providing a full. Uh menu of development services. Uh one third of our uh staff members. Uh are uh operating remotely and they've entered into uh telecommuting agreements with my office. To uh define the scope of their work while they're working from home uh to provide uh benchmarks. And uh reporting responsibilities while they uh continue to work on long range and mid-range uh planning projects. Uh the uh office is continuing to provide full services to plan review, permits. Of zoning cases subdivision uh processing uh as well as historic preservation activities. Uh the uh, a- as you might suspect, COVID nineteen has uh had a negative impact on the land development industry. Uh developers, uh both residential and commercial, uh appear to be sitting on the sideline and waiting to see what the. Outcome will be. However, we have a steady uh stream of projects that already entered. Uh the project pipeline and they get funding in place and those projects are continuing to work their way through. Uh the permitting system as well as the inspection system. With that, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Next, we have the public health department.
Honorable mayor, commissioners, good evening. Uh the public health department uh continuity plan. As you know, the many, the essentials of the city of Brownsville to provide public health services to the public. And continue to maintain the same level of internal and external uh work that we're doing. With this pandemic, uh. We have unprecedented uh things that we need to deal with. So what we've done at the health department is we have shifted. From normal operations within the continually plan to work within the incident command system. A majority of our staff is level one mission critical and we continue to work uh with our field uh op. Operations in, in the ways that our food inspectors and our ordinance enforcement officers are now working in, in tandem. They're. Going to medical facilities, they're going to uh retail markets. That we're working hand in hand with the police department, hand in hand with legal department. As some of these orders coming from the, from either the resolution from the mayor or or the county judge or the governor. Uh pla- places and in situations where we are addressing. Many of the social distances that they need to be uh adhered to. So some of the changes internally that we've done is that the administration and the permits, uh we have. Added a, added a drive-through window at City Plaza. Uh construction is almost final and we, we're hoping to be there very soon. The wellness division is a category three and they're teleworking. Uh we do use them frequently as they continue to help us to get the documents that are required and and help us. Come in uh on certain days of the week so that they can help us print the, the needs that are needed as we're printing many. Many of the outreach materials that are required to go out in the community. Uh at the uh, the vector control division has actually joined with our ordinance enforcement officers. And we have seized the mosquito um trapping operations at this time. The, the bark of the animal shelter, we have shifted to do an adoptions by appointment. And have added a fostering as an integral part of our, of our ongoing activities. As you know, the, this pandemic situation requires us to maintain a high level of readiness. So the, one of the big changes that we've done is our inspectors now take their vehicle home and their radios and all their critical equipment. Uh that way, if they need to respond after hours under this new paradigm that we work on, they can be prepared uh to meet the challenges ahead of the community. That's my report.
Any questions?
I do want to commend you art personally for all the work you've been doing. And I, I've seen a lot of the work firsthand. That your department's been doing, uh you know, being on the emergency management team and and all that. I think you're doing a fantastic job and I really do want to thank you for. For the work you're doing. I know that you and and OD and Chiefs are, are all uh working overtime, uh making sure that we're on top of everything, so I do want to thank you and the rest of the team for that. Thanks.
Absolutely agree. Thank you.
We appreciate that. I will share that with our staff. Thank you.
Next, we have a city manager's office.
Uh mayor, commission, we'll make ours very quick. Basically, we're all teleworking at this time. We've been doing so since the twentieth. Uh when we had an incident where we took precautions. At that point, we were prepared to do telework. We had spent the majority of that week. Uh preparing for that, so we were able to take, make, take that step. What we've done after that is, on the twenty, the week of the twenty-third, last Monday, we further implemented plans for our executive. Uh assistant and admin assistant who are both still working at the office, but they're capable to shift in and out on a telework. Uh basis, but for now, they're doing some additional catch-up work within the office. Um what we're doing is using the pandemic planning framework, our continuity plans basically separate us completely where. Uh myself, Helen, Brian, Marina, that's four levels right there. We are not spending any time together. Helen currently is at EOC. She has been floating in and out to support different things such as the testing site. Um and things like that, but overall, we're sticking to our virtual EOC operations. Uh managing the city completely telework, using telework. Also, Armito is doing telework. He's still able to work on his work plan. Uh you have seen emails from him on the Zoom master plan. He's working on the feasibility. Uh study RFP and helping us with the federal estate agency, so he's, he's still being an asset to us. And then the grants and and community development staff, they're taking a role where they're supporting multiple departments with. Uh any needs they have, they're preparing with financial reimbursement framework where we can be ready to execute once we start seeing more of that coming in. Uh and they're still doing the five-year consolidated plan for HUD, monitoring grant compliance. They still have a lot to do on a day-to-day basis, but that's where the city manager's office is. We can telework for a long period of time. We're prepared to go for months uh under this current arrangement. We'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Ms. Berna. That's a nice risaco behind you, by the way. That's a what, sorry? A nice risaco behind you. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. That's behind my house. That's only a wish.
When they tell you to shelter and you go to a lake.
Uh thank you, thank you, Ms. Berna.
I also just remembered something. Today is the one-year anniversary of our police chief, so congratulations, chief.
Thank you.
Yes, it is. We'll celebrate when all this is over.
Thank you all.
Next on our agenda, we have a financial update, emergency procurement.
Good evening, our mayor, Lupita, our finance director. I'm gonna be starting another presentation and have Odile out to assist me. We'll cover some of these. Um uh spending updates on uh second slide. Can you go to the second slide? Um this is a summary of the expenditures. We've broken up into two different categories. One is the fiscal year twenty budget impact. And basically, uh since the onset of this event, we had tasked the, the department to start tracking. Their uh, their activities related to COVID nineteen from their line item budgets. The intent was that the, they track them, they report them to us, and as we seek reimbursement, we'd have a tracking. Uh details in order for us to proceed with it. Uh since then, we have decided to open up a new department so that we could start uh consolidating the accounting of it. But um in this particular case, four hundred seventy-four thousand, three hundred thirty-three thousand dollars was. Uh basically uh procured through the, the department's budget. Uh the second line item, emergency procurement, um this one was, we, we decided to separate it because this, this was. In response or in conjunction with the, with previous commission action where it allowed the uh city manager. Based on an emergency procurement to go forward on, on certain procurements. Uh two of the main items was uh procuring some. Much-needed uh personal protection equipment that relating to masks. They had an opportunity to make a rather large procurement and because of sensitivity. Uh we, it was time-sensitive. Uh we go, we'll go over that the, the next presentation and also contracting of services for the um. Drive, uh drive-through testing uh for coronavirus. Uh that total of all the expenditures, five hundred fifty-two thousand, five hundred sixty-three dollars. FEMA will reimburse eligible expenses up to seventy-five percent, which we are, will be anticipating once available. Just submit for reimbursement, four hundred fourteen thousand, four hundred twenty-two dollars. That, that is as of the twenty-ninth of March. If you go to the next slide. Uh this is a cost summary uh that makes up the, the four hundred seventy-four thousand personnel. These are personnel costs associated directly to providing services, uh support of COVID nineteen. That supplies, leasing costs, contracts, uh other miscellaneous costs and use of equipment. Details of that, of those different categories are listed down there, like uh supplies, these are janitorial supplies. N ninety-five masks, thermometers, gloves, gowns and safety, lease would be a cell phone MiFi's. Contracts would be janitorial services for airport and B metro. Uh miscellaneous cost was a conference that the health department had attended. Fee software, ink for printers and FEMA allows for reimbursement of equip- equipment used by the city. And that, that amount is there. We go to slide number four, please. Uh on the other costs, like I mentioned before, uh this is a time-sensitive purchase, the PPE mask. Uh procurement, initial procurement was for seven thousand masks, uh fif- a total of fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. Uh this is uh going through the procurement process. We did go through the effort of uh identifying other possible vendors, but because of the. The difficulty in getting some of these items, there was an opportunity to procure these items to a vendor. Uh total procurement was fifty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh we initial deposit of thirty-five thousand. Uh so that we could place the order, expectation of the delivery of those uh uh masks are the end of this week. Uh the other item on, on here is the drive-through testing. Uh right now, we have an estimate of uh the cost for five days. Uh operating costs, which is medical staff of six thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars and testing kits of eleven thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. On this one, it, it uh, it identifies that the city will be paying for, for kits for uninsured patients. Out of about a hundred and ten thou- a hundred and ten dollars per kit. Um, Odie, do you want to add anything on this?
So I just want to uh say that this is just the first five days. We need to keep in mind that these first five days, the first day and second day were slow for us. So our costs uh might be increasing as the days go by for the simple reason that once we get uh four hundred, uh use four hundred tests. We will be paying for the provider's services uh for the medical assistance that are actually at the site and also uh for the. Uh PA that's reviewing and approving the questionnaires. Um so that's going to be a slight increase with that. We should be hitting four hundred uh tests by today. We were at three hundred and thirty-eight as of yesterday.
Ms, Ms. Odie, mayor, commissioner, I just want to add the, the split on testing kits has been uh the insured to uninsured. We've had. Roughly an average of about fifty percent split. On some days, that figure goes more in the, in the private insurance. Than, than the uninsured, but uh as we've been tracking that figure, uh we, we've been at about forty-five percent, some days fifty-two percent. So we're, we're tracking that figure, so we are getting the in- insured people who are not a, an encumbrance to the city. Uh but those are good numbers. Initially, we thought we were going to have a lot more uninsured. And up to now, we, we've had a, a good split of uh the costs.
And I will, I will say though that the, the amount of tests are going up. So we're having more people test. The last two days have shown a significant increase in, in the amount of people that are testing, so those costs are going to go up. But it's good to see though, and, and I anticipated that we were going to be able to get some reimbursement, but. But seeing that it's uh, it's going to be that kind of reimbursement is good. That's great.
Does qualify for reimbursement, so we will be submitting that for reimbursement once we're able to submit to FEMA.
If I may ask, this is Helen Ramirez. Uh we are looking out, working actively on launching a donation campaign. Uh very soon and that, that campaign will be to allow for private individuals to be able to donate. To the uninsured testing fund. Thank you.
And I just want to add that really the service is, uh there's no price that you can put on it because we've already identified. Multiple community members and not just that, we're finding hundreds of people who felt like they had been exposed or had symptoms. Um I can tell you that I'm one of the people that um got extremely sick in November. Um many of you probably have seen that post online about that if you were that sick in November, maybe you had coronavirus. And I went to my private doctor to do the test for the antibodies to see if I had it and sure enough, I didn't. So what I had was not coronavirus. But when you're sick and you see all of these things, it makes you feel even worse and you just don't know what's going on. If you should be around your children or, you know, it's just very complicated. So. I am so grateful to the city of Brownsville and Mayor Mendez and the commission and the emergency uh the EOC and our city management. For really providing this service for the public. Um it is invaluable and we have been able to identify people who were out there. Um possibly spreading, community spreading to um innocent people who are elderly and and fragile. So I'm very grateful to city staff and thank you for doing that.
Thank you, commissioner. Uh yeah, I agree and we appreciate the support. Uh last week, Friday, Saturday, I, we sent the directors a, a wins. What we do is every, every week that we meet, we go over the wins that we've gone over, that we've gone through as a, as an organization, as a team and.
And that's one of the things that we mentioned, despite the COVID-19 situation. Keep in mind that for the most part, we're still trying to find that normalcy in keeping the work plan going, modifying where we need to defer projects. In other words, we still have to manage the city in light of COVID. And we're reviewing the work plans. Telework is actually more work. It's telework equals overwork because what we find is that you end up working more hours once you draw the lines between work and home. So I do want to commend Helen, our chiefs, Obi, for delivering, not just the drive-through testing, but there was a lot more done. Communications has done the Q and A for the Facebook. There's just a variety of things that we were able to do on COVID despite having to still run the city.
I agree.
I may ask a question. Lupe, this is Nerith Kalonsky. The slide where you had like over $400,000 in, I think it was like salaries or operating costs. Where's that coming from? Is that like overtime or is that, it's not an ordinary expense?
On that, the large amount is attributed to fire and police operations that based on their activity is allocable to FEMA reimbursement.
And then the other question that I have, but I'm not sure, maybe it's Odie. What with testing kits, since supposedly there's such a short supply of them, what happens if we run out or get very close to getting a small supply and you don't know when the next batch of tests is going to come? What's going to happen then?
The provider is the one that's purchasing those test kits. So he's aware of what supply he has and he's continuously ordering to ensure that he does not run out.
And there are cases where people run out, or I'm just not familiar with that part of it. Maybe y'all are more familiar with that.
Commissioner, I could answer that. So they go based on a system of how much they've ordered historically. And then he also has gone outside and found a second vendor who's willing to sell them the test kits. So he actually pre-ordered a bulk amount as a perspective to this event. So he, I believe he said he had 3,000 kits come in on Monday night.
There's obviously a shortage of testing kits across the nation, not just to us. And production is ramping up. And so hopefully, we'll see the results of that ramped-up production by the time that happens.
Thank you.
And I will just put this out there for the public that even if you're not able to get into the sports park on time, there are private doctors out there that are currently offering these kits to the public as well. Like the antibody kit that I told you I took. It was 60 bucks in and out within 15 minutes. So if you're rejected from the sports park and you really, really feel like you have it, just, you know, search it and you will find doctors that are offering that here in Brownsville.
Okay, next item.
Okay, next up, we have the airport.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I apologize. I had an audio difficulty at the very beginning. So also apologize for the picture that's up on the screen. That is not me. So I apologize for that. We, obviously, we started this exercise about a week and a half. And we kind of hit the, the airport kind of hit the road running. You can go to the next slide. What we did right off the bat is, is we looked at what we needed to do at the airport to kind of restrict public contact. So right off, right off, right out of the gates, what we did is we eliminated access to ticket passengers only in the terminal. We coordinated with PD and we were able to have some warrant officers assist us to increase security presence in front of the terminal. We also blocked off a section on the south side of the terminal so we can manage and control the vehicles transitioning through the front of the terminal. Since it started, we've been having daily conference calls with American Airport Association of Airport Executives. We've been having those calls daily. As of today, we're going to slow down on those calls to kind of get a feel of what other airports are doing, the needs of other airports, the resources available at other airports, as well as some of the political legislative items that they were pushing in Washington to give us some relief. And I'll go through some of that towards the end of the slide. As always, we continue to reinforce hand washing, the protocols to the staff, and cleaning the specific areas for us working in the administrative office areas. After that hit, obviously, the rental car companies limited their counter hours, counter space hours due to the flight cancellations. So basically, Thursday and Friday, we started seeing a major hit in the cancellations with the airlines. We did get notification from the restaurant that they were going to be closed until April 6. That notification did come through saying that we would probably get together with him prior to that to see if he's going to stay open or open back up on the 6th. At this time, we have a short, we have a small staff. We have a staff of about five people up in administrative offices. We are not teleworking at this point. We are, we did send a list to EA and MIS to ensure that we obtain the proper equipment for us to be able to fully function away from the office. So that's kind of forthcoming. Next slide. On Friday, Governor Abbott issued an executive order mandating self-quarantine of 14 days for individuals traveling to Texas after their destinations through airports from, actually, it was the tri-state area, New York, New Jersey, Connecticut, and New Orleans. That was issued on Friday. DPS is the agency that has the authority to actually implement this executive order. That actually was implemented on Saturday. And I can't say enough about DPS, the folks that are here. They have been working great with us, no issues. We've got them parked in an area that they have no impact on the public. They're working great with us. So as of, as of today, it's been kind of seamless. Their process basically is, is what they do is they have a form, they ask them questions. And then if they're coming from those particular airports, then obviously, they do that self-quarantine of those individuals, or they're allowed to fly back out and leave. I believe as of Monday, he issued another executive order that was tagged onto this, which included Miami, California, Washington, Chicago, and Atlanta and Detroit. So basically, what they're doing is they're manning our exit lane. They're coordinating with us and the airlines on arrivals. And then they're ensuring that they have staff here to be able to question the arriving passengers. Yesterday, they also included all general aviation flights. So we've also kind of got them with the FBOs, Southmost, as well as Pan Am. This is an executive order that is driven by DPS, and they are basically in charge of actually implementing this order. So we're just standing by and making sure that we are a resource for them. And they're actually coming up with the implementation of these two orders. Next slide. You can kind of see our flight cancellations. It's kind of been going downhill. I kind of did a snapshot from the 23rd to the 29th. You can kind of see the flight cancellations for American and United was 12 and 14. We did have available seats. Our account was very low. You can see the load factor just for that week. For American was 39.4 and United was 33.7. Collectively, that load factor for that week was 34.4%. Very low load factor for one week. The good news about this, if there's any good news about this, is we were very strong with the first part of March, the spring break. So you'll see the next slide, you'll see our load factors for the month. Still down, but we're still holding off on 59% for United. And let's see, 66% for American. And that was taken in consideration, still significant cancellations for both airlines. To put in perspective, you can see the difference in passenger counts from 2019 to 2020. For United was 3,001 and passenger count for American was 2,299. So you can kind of see significantly down in terms of passenger count for those two, for the month of March from, for 29, 2019 over 2020. As of today, we're still experiencing significant cuts. Most of our morning flights have been canceled. They seem to be picking up later in the afternoon. We have not had an overnighter in a few days. And from their flight schedule, it looks like we may pick up the overnighter for American at least tomorrow night, starting tomorrow night. But we're still tracking cancellations because that in turn relates to revenue loss for us. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So here's a snapshot of the revenue. But what I did is I took 25% cut from our existing budget. Now, it was just kind of a benchmark I kind of looked at. And if you go back to our load factors, that's almost on point. We're about 20% less load factors from 2019 to 2020. So I had Luis and Lupe from Finance kind of look at what would our revenues look like with a 25% hit based on the original budget of 2020. With that being said, we left the expenses the same as was budgeted in 2020. So you could see this, you can see the decrease in revenues now over expenses for a three-month period, a four-month period, a five-month period, and a six-month period. So you can see it kind of significantly going down. If this crisis continues beyond three months, four months, five months, and six months, hopefully, it doesn't get to that because obviously, then it starts compounding as we kind of get farther deep into this crisis. Next slide, please. So that was basically a kind of a visual for you. This is, this slide right here will kind of show you the numbers. So if you look at the revenue projections in revenue for our budgeted fiscal year 2020, we had a 3% projected increase in revenues. And then if three months into this crisis, at a 25% decrease, we're at 4%, 4.5%, decrease in revenues, then it goes to 7, 10, and 13 going to six months out. Like I indicated in the previous slide, we looked at the expenses. The expenses remained the same. And I did that for a purpose that we do have some control over expenses moving forward. So I kept that as the same so we can kind of look at as a benchmark. And you can kind of see our shortfall in revenues from three months, four months, five months, and six months. So shortfall in revenues just at three months is about $200,000. And then you can see it goes to three, four, and five as we move through three to six months out. Next slide, please. So like I indicated, we don't have much control of the revenue. Decrease, obviously, but we do have some control over our expenses. So as we go through the expenses for the remainder of the year, we're going to soften hiring freezes. Obviously, we're going to evaluate existing budgets, revenues versus expenses. I've already started that with the departments, limited to only necessary travel. We're going to talk with all the departments to make sure we're eliminating travel. And as always, we're going to review and evaluate purchases with all the supervisors. I've already started that process and review and control overtime expenses unless it's an emergency situation or it's associated with COVID-19. The bottom thing, the bottom note there is airports can only defer and not waive rent. And that was actually came from an FAA guidance. We can defer rent, but we cannot waive any rental, terminal rental fees because our mission for the airports is to try to be self-sustaining as possible. So that came actually out of FAA guidance. Next, next slide, please. So we've been talking with the AAAE. There are actually our organization that helps airports on the legislative front. You guys have been probably hearing a lot going on with the stimulus relief bill. We've been working and they've been working hard in DC. And they actually tied a airport relief bill to the stimulus bill. Obviously, you know, it's about a $2 trillion relief package. The airports were successful in getting $10 billion for, just for airports. And those are basically for airport and airline-related provisions under the final bill. Those were to prevent, prepare for, and respond to anything that remains, basically assist us with our operating expenses. In the bill, it also measures and provides flexibility to the airports to use these sources for any purposes for which airport revenues may be used, lawfully used. They've given us quite a bit flexibility in terms of what we can use that for. So we're still looking at that on how we can lawfully use those funds. We did get the money allocated, not allocate, excuse me. We did get the money approved through the bill. The next piece is they are working with the FAA and obviously, some of the legislatures on how they're going to actually allocate those funds to the various airports. So that has not been determined yet on how they're going to allocate those funds. In that bill as well, was a package for the airlines. And it provides $58 billion in grants and loans for the airlines. So the airlines did get a part of, they did get some money out of that bill. Obviously, you can see they got significantly higher amount than the airports did. And that's pretty much the same as the next on the list is how they're going to allocate those grants and loans to the airport, I mean, to the airlines. Next slide, please. Sorry, that was about it. As you know, this is revolving for us. Our biggest thing is controlling, not controlling, but kind of monitoring the cancellations and working with our partners and stakeholders throughout this. And we're talking to them every day. So sorry if I was a little long-winded. I apologize. I just wanted to get some information out too, to kind of give you an idea on what's happening out here at the airport. I can answer any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Next up, we have Brownsville Metro.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This slide just presents a snapshot of our ridership last year versus our ridership this year for the same time period. And you can see the decrease in ridership due to the COVID-19.
Next slide, please.
This rider, this slide here indicates our ridership again for paratransit service last year where it indicates that our rider at 95, our highest rider at 95 trips, so we're right around 40 trips. And most of the trips now are being taken for medical and work-related. We're not taking, we're not picking up any social or recreational at this time. Most of the people that are making the request for these trips are basically work and work and medical.
Next slide, please.
Okay. Oh, and I and our, and in our budget slide, I just wanted to say that today we had a meeting, conference call with Techstat on the CARE Act. And what I've got, what I would like to share is that the twenty five billion dollars that was allocated for public transportation is going to reimburse all COVID revenue losses and expenses at a hundred percent through the grant. We anticipate that the funds will be available for us to, to be, to be able to go in and and apply for them by the end of last, the end of next week. Yeah, the FTA has seven days to let each of the transit providers know what their, what their allocation is going to be. And it is also going to be retroactive for any expenses that would go back to, back to January of twenty twenty. January twentieth of twenty twenty. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Mayor, Commissioner, just to briefly interject on this, on these reports, we have thus far done two of our enterprise funds, Airport and B Metro, since those are two funds that are supported by General Fund, so money leaves General Fund. The other fund that we're looking at next, and we're working with the county and the, and CBP, is the Bridge Fund. As money comes into General Fund from that, we also have to look at the Landfill Fund and also POB, but that we don't anticipate much change to the water sewer and electric side of things, but we'll still monitor that. So we're trying to first gauge the interfund activity and how that could impact General Fund. And as Ope mentioned, we're also working on a framework to provide you a, an update for General Fund specifically. But thus far, we've begun with our enterprise funds. These two, we're fortunate that we have big brother, so to speak, the federal government, FAA, and FTA that will provide support. We won't be able to, like to say the same for the Bridge, Landfill, and General Fund. Well, that's where FEMA comes in, but we'll give you all that very soon.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, the next agenda item, one C, drive-through collections testing site update.
Odie and Art, can you provide this update? And certainly Helen and myself can chime in and the Chiefs, but I think Art, Odie and Art have a good handle on this.
Absolutely. Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, the slide that you have before you is to give you a, the big picture of where we're at as of three thirty one, ten o'clock last night. We have tested three hundred and thirty eight individuals, and the split has been a hundred ninety one insured, a hundred and forty seven uninsured. Up to last night, we had had three positive and three hundred and thirty five negative. This is the, the, the big picture numbers. We, we look at what we do every night and and we confirm the numbers with a contractor. Over the last, the last five days, so this would be a report for day one through five. We were closed on the weekends, and the operation has been running for the most part, Monday through Friday, eight to five. The appointments are scheduled ahead of time through the portal so that the line of vehicles is is managed. And it's never a, a situation where you have too many vehicles in line waiting. The, there are six lanes at the site. So there is a capacity, it was engineered to build up to capacity. And for example, today, a hundred and eighty three were scheduled to be seen. I don't have today's numbers, but it just shows that every day we are able to ramp up the operation a bit more efficiently from the initial date of nineteen visits to a hundred and eleven yesterday. Odie, do you want to mention anything?
Yes. The total submissions that we have received through, through yesterday evening was two thousand one hundred and sixty six. So we do have residents that are actually interested in and being tested. So the providers are screening those questionnaires, and they are scheduling residents as the, as needed. Right now, we're only open Monday through Friday from eight to five. And depending on the submissions of questionnaires that we're getting and the residents that do need to be tested, we might have to increase the hours of our operation. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're good.
If there are no more questions or comments, that is all we have on the agenda for tonight.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you.
For joining us.
Thank you.